Hey everyone, welcome to the Rising Above Podcast, a platform for you to share your story. Oftentimes, we all have something that happens to us in life and we have no way of sharing. Many people want an outlet, whether it's writing a book, or going on a massive networking platform, or starting an inspirational social media account. With the Rising Above platform, anyone with an inspiring, motivating, or interesting story can come on and share. It could be anything from the struggles of starting a business, the struggles of overcoming homelessness, or mental illness. I've interviewed victims of rape, sexual assault, and abuse. There is no subject that is off limits. This platform offers a safe and fun way for you to share your story through a one-on-one experience. If you would like to share your story, the best way to reach out would be through social media. You can find me on Instagram, and Facebook, or through email. All the links will be provided in the show notes. Thank you for listening. Welcome to the Rising Above Podcast. My name's David Hess, and today I have Clarita with me. She is running for city council here in Lansing, Michigan. So, I don't want to steal her thunder. I want her to give an introduction. So, I guess with that being said, how are you doing today, Clarita? I can't talk again.
That's okay. I'm okay.
You've been busy, haven't you?
Yeah, I've been, well, I am. So, part of campaigning, it takes a lot, a lot of hours, and I actually don't make a lot of money. So, my goal this month was to work a lot, so next month I don't have to work as much. Like, I'm probably gonna like work like four or five days, so I can knock on doors. So, I had to like do some crazy shifts this month, and so it made me like, I'm like, I don't want to do that ever again. That was way too much, because like we always do like 12-hour shifts, but they always can push you more. Like, you never do less, you do more.
Who's pushing you?
No, so like, you know, when people call 911, if they, so if my shift is seven to seven, but if they call 911 at 6:30, I'm going to call at 6:30 because the other shift hasn't come in. So, of course, I'm probably not gonna get home at 8:30, you know what I mean?
Right. So, I guess with that being said, what do you do?
Oh, I'm a firefighter EMT.
Okay.
Um, I actually have two jobs, because like rural fire departments don't usually pay a lot. They might have a couple full-time staff, but they still don't pay a lot, because their tax base is not as large. And so, I work there, and I work at a private EMS company.
Wow, and you're running for city council?
Yeah.
Why, why are you doing this?
Man, because, um, well, so, so the main reason was because I saw that Kathy Dunbar was not gonna run again, and I looked at who was running at large. At the time, it was only Jeff Brown. And I looked up some of his stuff. I'm like, this dude is not progressive, and the current city council is not really progressive. So, I'm like, dang, we're gonna be screwed. So, um, I talked to some people, and we tried to get other people to run, and they're like, no, I want to do this, blah, blah, blah. So then I'm like, dude, I think I got the social capital, and so people are like, yeah, well, then go ahead and do it. So, I did it, going in with the mindset that, you know, I don't have any political experience, and so I don't, I have no idea how to really do this. So, I don't know how successful I'm gonna be, but I know how hard I want to work at it. And it turned out that I had way more social capital than I realized. And so then I'm like, I think I'm gonna win. And so, um, that actually made me work harder, because I'm like, if I did not realize that my friends believed in me that much, and just knowing that they believed in me that much made me feel that much harder that I had to be in that position. Because it wasn't just like people being like, oh, you're my friend, fine, I'll vote for you. They were like, oh my gosh, you're running for this? Like, they would get emotional, which made me emotional, and I'm like, okay, I think this is a big deal or something.
Well, that's really cool. Um, I'm assuming you're, you're young, right?
I'm, I don't know. Actually, I'm older than everybody I'm running against.
Really?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. Um, yes, I am older than all of, we're all millennials, though. So, that's not like saying a lot.
So, you're, you're adding kind of a new element to city council, whereas you're coming in with these younger kind of ideologies, would you say?
I would definitely say that. I would say that even though they're younger than me, that they all are doing traditional political work.
Like what?
Like, they're following kind of the democratic machine, and it's kind of like, you, you make sure not to say anything negative about the other people in your group, because at any time, you could need them to be able to push you forward. So, they're very careful not to really say anything about each other, but at the same time, that means they're not challenging one another when they do something wrong. And, um, so to me, that's a problem, because I don't care if you're my daddy, my man, my brother. If you wrong, you wrong, and I'm gonna call you out. First, I'm gonna call you in, right? And it's gonna be like a personal talk, but then if you continue to do it, then I'm gonna have to do it publicly. I'm gonna have to have some witnesses with me, because, I mean, I don't know, so I don't know what you know about me, but...
I honestly don't know a whole lot.
Well, I'm about to tell you a little bit.
That's why I wanted to have you on here, so I could learn, learn all kinds of things.
Well, so I follow Christianity, and one of the things, you know, it comes from Judaism, and one of the things that they say, like, if you have a complaint against your brother, right, you come to them first, and you talk to them about it. If that don't work, then you bring witnesses. And so, to me, that's how I go at stuff. And so, this idea of like, I'm gonna protect you just because we're in the same crew?
Right.
Nah, that's not gonna happen. I'd rather protect the people, because the people need protection more than you do.
Well, and that's kind of the problem with, uh, politics, right? Like, um, I mean, and it goes all the way up to the presidency, right? Is, you get these fringes, you know, these people who agree to one, one side, one side fits all. Like, I'm, I'm in this party, they're in that party, we stick together, and they stick together. Right? That's kind of an issue as far as like when you want to, when you need to work together, is it not?
Um, so, until recently, I would have said the two political parties are pretty much the same, until President Trump. And then he kind of blew that all up, and now I don't know what the heck is going on. But I would, I would say traditionally, the Democrats and the Republicans, they say different things to us, but if you notice, they don't have problems voting on how much their raises are gonna be, what their healthcare is gonna be. There's a lot of things they have no problem like discussing with one another.
Right.
The only times they seem to argue is when it comes to giving us things. And in the end, they still end up with things, and we end up with nothing. So, I would say that I don't really see that much of a difference between them. Now, we do have this like new group of right-wing people who do not follow traditional republicanism. I, and the reason I say that, so my parents are Republicans, and a lot of people I know are Republicans, and in their mindset is more like, I think people, the regular people, right, they used to think like, well, Republican means I don't want my taxes going to these things, because I feel like the churches and charities can do these things. I don't want the government doing it, the government's inefficient. That in itself is not racist, xenophobic, nothing like that. That's just a different way of thinking of how to use your money. And then you have the Democrats that are like, I don't think we can trust the people to do this, so we should do it collectively, and we can, you know, we can agree that these are important things to do, and we can make sure that the people collectively are fed, and blah, blah, blah. But in real life, don't neither one of them sides do that. So, to me, I'm like, okay, but you see that they're unified for whatever thing they really want. Both sides.
Right.
They're unified in their own group, and they're unified together. So, what I see on city council is that they are unified as a group for certain things. They don't, if you ever watch the city council, they're not arguing all the time. Whenever I read some of their little, um, their literature, and they're saying, oh, I want to make sure, you know, I'm not bickering, and we're blah, blah, blah. And I'm like, that's what y'all do. That's the problem. Y'all do that all the time to the detriment of the people, because nobody is challenging somebody else's views, and you need to, how do all of y'all think the same way? Don't I think that's weird? I think that's weird.
Um, what specifically are the jobs of city council? And then also, how do you plan on coming in there and kind of shaking things up a little bit? Because you're obviously from outside of the party lines, you're coming in, you, because you want to try to make a difference. What do you plan on doing differently?
Um, so, the city council is, the, I would say, one of the biggest things they're responsible for is approving a budget. So, the mayor, yeah, the major, mayor could say, I want to do whatever, you know, sky's the limit. But the city council has the power to be like, nah, you ain't gonna do that, but they don't do that. So, basically, our mayor gets whatever they want. The mayor can put in whatever they want, because generally, what I've noticed, city council, they'll discuss it, they'll act like, oh, I don't know, ask these questions, and then they all vote yes. So, I'm like, okay, what was the point of that? So, that, that's their biggest power. They also can investigate city departments. That's something they haven't done either.
Really?
So, you, you've heard, I'm sure, about the discrimination lawsuits? People are coming out right and left.
There's a lot of them.
Women, black folks, everybody's coming out.
Yep.
But at no point did you hear the city council say, hey, I think we need to investigate this.
Oh, my gosh.
And so then, there were, they could have investigated before it became lawsuits, actually, because they did not become lawsuits until like recently. You know what I mean? So, they could have investigated them. That's their job. And so, that's what I'm bringing. What I'm bringing is, I'm like, I'm, I, I want to encourage, because the thing about the city council, one person can't do anything, which is why I support Oprah Revish for Second Ward, um, because you need more people, and there are already other people with more progressive leanings, like I would say Brian T. Jackson. Um, it used to be Brandon Vets. Yeah, we lost him. Um, it's cool, we're gonna replace him. So, um, but the thing is, you can't...
Positivity.
We can't do none of this stuff on our own, so yes, I can encourage the city council and be like, hey, I think we should do this, blah, blah, blah. But in reality, it's not gonna get done unless they agree. So, my thing is, um, what I'm trying to do is build political power. I'm not just trying to get into office, because I tell you this, whether or not I get into office, I'm gonna be in they butt, in they butt. And it won't just be me, it's a whole bunch of other people who are thinking similar to me, who are like, I'm tired of not having a voice. And so, what we're doing is, we're gonna start, you know, making sure there's people from the different communities who are going to run, who are not regular politicians, who can help be the voice of the people, because apparently, our city council people don't think they need to represent marginalized people. They think they only need to represent middle-class and rich folks, and they want to forget about everybody on the South Side. They want to forget about black people and Latinos. They don't care about the poor Asians. They don't care about disabled people. They don't care about nobody.
Right.
So, except for people who already have resources. But we all pay taxes in some shape or form, and so therefore, that money belongs to us. So, we all should get a say, so...
Yeah, I think that's a huge problem with politics, is once people, they, and that's the thing, like, I mean, obviously, people running for offices, they, it's easy for them to be like, oh, this is what I plan on doing when I get into office. But then, once they get in, they just forget about the people that put them in, in office. It's a huge problem.
I would say locally, I don't even see that.
No.
I think they do exactly what they say they were gonna do, except for our mayor.
Andy Shore.
With the one thing, right, with the one thing. With the other stuff, you know, yes, he, he's looking for, you know, economical development. He's doing, he's definitely doing that for certain people, for certain groups, for certain areas. But has he addressed diversity? No. What he's done is, um, I'm gonna try to be careful, because I know y'all not black, so I'm gonna be careful about how I say this, but what he's doing is, he's putting people in positions who look like marginalized people and have some marginalization, but are not fully marginalized, and actually feel beholden to powers. So, therefore, they're gonna do what they say, but they can say, look, I put all these black people in positions. This is awesome. This is diversity and inclusion, but it's really not.
I feel like that's a pretty deep thing to say.
It's pretty obvious, though.
I, and this is the thing, I, I haven't been that involved in politics locally. Um, I just recently, I actually interviewed Andy Shore, uh, this last spring, and then, uh, my, um, audio, I did a whole interview with him, and the audio wasn't working. And so, like, a couple of days later, I went to go edit the podcast, and I'm like, no, no. So, you know, I, I, I had just recently kind of started following politics here locally. Um, I've lived in Lansing for five years, um, so I haven't really gotten too, like, too involved, but kind of seeing how everything's going, and being a part of the community, and getting more involved in the community, it makes me want to know more about everything that's going on. And, um, I would say Andy Shore, in, in my eyes, looks like he's doing a lot of good things for our community, as far as, like you said, development, and, um, he's always at ribbon cuttings and stuff, which seems like a front, uh, because he did nothing for that, but, um, I guess I don't really know too much about the marginalized people that he's been putting in office.
Um, so, he likes to take, so I don't know if you've heard his nickname, his nickname is propaganda. And the reason he got that nickname is because of his propaganda. So, for example, when you had a firefighter come out and say, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling because people discriminated against me, and I'm constantly getting attacked and abused, and blah, blah, blah. And then you have the mayor say, there's nothing here. That's just one person, he's just unhappy, blah, blah, blah. And then you have the mayor do this, um, which, by the way, I also called out the, the departments for not having any black women on the fire department, for having one ever.
Do they, do they have many women on the fire department?
They have, okay, so in firefighting, it's, it's a male thing, right?
Right.
Um, but when you get into it, you realize it's not because of the career, it's because of the gatekeeping. There's a lot of gatekeeping. Um, firefighting is like 90% emergency medical services, not actual firefighting.
Okay.
So, but they use this like physical ability test to say who can come in and who can't. And like, so for example, I did it at Lansing, and the things, so I had already been through fire school, but the things they were having you do, you didn't have to do in fire school. And they're like, and it's like, if you're a dude, sure, you could do it. No problem. Well, not only am I a woman, but I'm a smaller woman.
Right, you said you're short. How tall are you, by the way?
Four eleven and three quarters, but on my license, I put five feet, because my, um, well, it gives you like a little edge where, you know, even though BMI is BS, it gives you like a couple pounds, like, that you can have. So, they won't be like, oh, you're fat, like, but, um, yeah, and plus my doctors, it depends on the doctor. But my sister has gotten out the measuring tape many times, just to prove I was not five feet. She's not tall either. She's five one and a half.
Is she younger?
Yeah.
Of course, those younger sisters.
But, but so, um, let me, let me see if I can say the numbers off the top of my head. So, in, in general, in firefighting, um, 85% of firefighters are white men.
In Lansing?
In, in everywhere.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, and you know, I'm sure you have like in Chicago and Detroit, it's gonna look a little different.
Right.
Because they have 50 to 99% black folks. But it depends, so, I, I want to say it was like 20 or 30 years ago, the Michigan legislature said, you can't say that they have to live in the city, and that changed things in a bad way for places where you have a lot of minorities. Because then that means they don't, that's why our police department is the way that it is.
Right.
They're not from the city.
Right.
And if they're not from the city, they don't have that investment, but they, they decided to do away with that. So, now, if we want that change, we have to look at the Michigan legislature and get them to change it, which they probably won't.
It needs to be changed.
It definitely needs to be changed.
I think you should police where you live.
I definitely don't want no police, so the problem is, then they think like urban areas are the jungle, when they live in the country. And part of that is not their fault, right? Part of that is media and the lack of exposure. So, they come from the country, they're used to a different, you know, way of acting and speaking and behaving. So, and they come to the city, and they're like, oh, why they do that, da, 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 this the jungle, you know what I'm saying? I don't want you calling us the jungle. You don't need to work with us if you think this is the jungle. You know what I'm saying? This is people's homes. These are people, not animals. This ain't the jungle, okay?
Yeah, I mean, it's a different culture, right? I mean, regardless of where you're at in the city, if you're, I actually had Rich Griffin on the podcast. I don't know if you know who he is, but he works actually with Good Time Makes Good Sense. It's this thing right here. Um, and he was, he spent time in prison. Uh, he went in as a juvenile lifer, and he came out, I think, when he was like in his 30s, and...
I'm glad he got out.
I know. Well, now he's advocating for people who are in prison, and that's what Good Time is, is, you know, like, I'm sure you've, have you heard of it?
I have not, but you know I hate prison and jail, and police and all of that. So, I'm just like, oh my gosh, that's so horrible. Why would you sentence a child to life?
Well, I think he went to jail for, I don't want to say what he went to jail for, because I don't actually remember exactly what he went in for. That was so many podcasts ago, so, um, it, it's hard to remember conversations now. Um, but that's one thing, you know, him and I were talking about, is people policing their communities is, when, when you're not from the area, and you're driving through, let's say, the South Side, and you're like, man, this place is the jungle, and you see people walking down the street that you're not necessarily, you know, like, like, you don't necessarily see that where you're from. You're gonna be more apt to put your attention towards them, and be like, hey, what are you doing? You're gonna stop them and, and frisk them, or whatever, and then you're just opening it up for all these situations that we see in the, in the media.
Mm-hmm. Or if you're like me, experience them.
Or like you. Um, so, with you going into office, what are your, I, I mean, I, I don't know, really know what you can do in the city council, but what is your ideas about the police force here in Lansing? What would you like to see changed?
So, in the, in the immediate time, I would like to see that money that's just sitting there. So, we have, I want to say about 14 positions that are just there, that are totally funded, that's been there for a couple of years.
What positions?
Police.
Police, okay.
And I would like to see that money go back to the community.
How so?
Um, and be used in community centers, um, be used for therapy, just any type of thing that's going back to the people. I think the people need to talk and discuss how they would like to do it, because I don't actually like the idea of the city council deciding everything for the people. Because our city council tends not to have the same lifestyle as a lot of the most marginalized people, and this money needs to be for the marginalized people. Um, so I would like the community to kind of talk and discuss about what they think the money should be used for, and then the city council to vote on that. But, um, yeah, that's a lot of money. If you think about 14 positions, and how much money that is, because that's healthcare, that's all of these different things.
Probably at least 300,000 a year.
So, for me, that's like...
For each position.
That's what I mean when I say to fund the police, like...
So, you don't mean actually taken from the police? You mean to reallocate?
Yeah, I definitely mean to reallocate, but I do, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be straight up with you. I do honestly think that policing is racist and classist, and the way that it currently operates.
How so? Sorry, I like to ask questions.
That's, no, that's what you're supposed to do. Okay, so, policing in the United States kind of came from two, two lines. And one line of it literally came from slave catching. And so, they, when slaves would escape and go to the North, they would send these people to go bring them back. And oftentimes, they would bring back people who actually were free and had never been slaves.
Just so they could say they caught them.
Yes. Um, and then you have the other half, right, which came from them, the cities, or municipalities, whatever they were, trying to control the citizens, and they usually targeted poor people to keep them in line, to protect property. Not to protect people, but to protect property. Um, none of those things are good. The police somehow during this time has created this idea that they are for protecting the people. So, when we're little kids, and we're like, oh, yeah, I want to be a firefighter, I want to be a police officer, you know, you think of this cool person who carries a gun, which part of it that we think is cool is because we're Americans, and we think guns are cool, you know?
Freedom.
I mean, for real, like, we like guns, we do. And so, this idea that there's this person who can carry this gun, and all of our best movies are like the shooting movies, like, you know what I'm saying? We think of this as a cool person who's the good guy, who protects people. But in real life, when you look at paper, and you look at the statistics, what you see is, you see people being put into a system. Um, my issue with that system is, it literally replaced slavery. So, during slavery, you had people giving free labor, right? Um, and now you have people who make what, 12 to 40 cents an hour, giving you basically free labor? And that's all that's happening, if you notice.
Talking about prisons.
I'm talking about prisons. If you're, if you're really rich, if you're a white, young, pretty woman, you are unlikely to be put in those positions for a long time. Um, but if you're black, Latino, indigenous, if you are anybody who is not in power and don't have influence and money, then you are more than likely gonna be a slave. And my thing is, just because somebody broke a law does not mean it's okay to make them a slave. And the idea that we've accepted this is weird and crazy to me.
I think that's a huge problem with our, with our society in, as a whole, is that we're so quick to lock people up for, for crimes that aren't necessarily something that you should be locked up for.
And even if it's something they should maybe be separated from society, I actually don't think they should be like locked up in cages.
How do you, how do you think people should be locked up?
Animals.
Um, I, I agree with that statement.
I think, I think there should be like communities for people who need to, to be redeemed, who need to work on themselves, where they're separated from the society at large. I do not think they, I don't understand where that came from, why is that okay?
How would you, I mean, it sounds good on paper.
It's not just on paper. In Norway, they doing it, like, they're places where they do it.
How would you mitigate, like, um, let's say somebody goes to jail, prison for like, um, like, I don't know, a pedi, like, being a pedophile? And then somebody went to jail for, let's say, marijuana, how would you, how would you control that?
I'm gonna say this, these are just my ideas, right? I'm not saying this is how it should be done, but you asked me the question, and so I can imagine things like this. And so, one thing about pedophilia is that they found, when they, when they looked at their brains, that it's actually something wrong with their brains.
Right.
So, finding that out for me was mind-blowing, because I always thought like they were just immorally corrupt people. And the thing is, there's something wrong with their brain.
Right. It's a sickness.
It, it is a sickness. That doesn't mean that it's okay, because, so I read the story about this young man, it blew my mind, like, it was crazy. So, he, when he was like a teenager, he realized that he liked children, so he went and told his mother, and his mother was like, what the heck? So, she tried to take him to therapist, and all the therapists turned him down. This is a teenager who hasn't acted upon it, who realizes there's something wrong with me. So, there was nobody for him to go to. They finally found him a therapist, and, um, they, they, the thing is, it's almost like an untouched thing. Like, it's not something that they've tried to do, because they haven't tried to redeem these people. So, um, it's basically like him and his therapist trying to figure out ways for, to help him, and he started, ended up starting like an online group for people who are pedophiles, who haven't actually done it yet, who just think about it, and so they're supporting one another, which just, it just blows my mind in so many ways. But things like that, we like throw people away, like, you're bad, you're evil, we don't want you anymore. And honestly, I can't think of anything worse than pedophilia. For me, that is the worst, to me, that's actually worse than murder, because you have somebody who has to live with what you did to them forever.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Actually, my wife and I were just talking about, I was, I was telling her how rape is kind, it's kind of a weird, I think we were watching like a documentary, and I was like, oh yeah, I was watching a documentary about a serial rapist. And, um, I'm like, that's kind of a weird thing, like a weird crime to commit, because you're, you're doing something to somebody. Like, you could, you could rob somebody, but they're gonna live the rest of their life, and they'll be fine. They'll probably forget about it at some point. It's not gonna affect them on a daily basis. But if you rape somebody, that's gonna affect them every single day of their life. It's kind of a weird crime that you can, you can do to somebody.
Yeah. It is, it's, it freaks me out in all types of ways, but I know after I read that story, it made me rethink my ideas, because I had been one of those people that was kind of like, they should all be murdered. They should just be gone.
Well, and I think that's an easy, easy thing to say for a lot of things, you know, like, oh, he, he's a shitty person, he did this one time, and he just doesn't deserve to be a part of society anymore. It's an easy thing, it's an easy cop-out, when in reality, it's a huge issue that needs to be addressed, and there's really no easy, good solution.
It's not gonna be easy.
It's an extremely sticky subject all around.
But it's, it feels easy to just throw them all into this like building and put them in cages, and just throw them food every once in a while, and let them come out and exercise. That, that is easy. So, I'm, I'm gonna say this, one of the things that has impressed me about Lansing, it has challenged me in my Christian faith, because I was brought up really conservative, and like, you know, like, yeah, you're bad, you need to be murdered, like, you know what I mean? And so, seeing people give grace to people that I was taught was, which is crazy, because this is not what Jesus said. Jesus never said anybody should be thrown away, but somehow, in conservative churches, that got in there. I don't know how, it just is. But to see people in Lansing, like, to be so gracious towards people who normally society would throw away, it, I mean, seriously, it has changed my mind, because then I started thinking, that sounds more like Jesus than what I learned. And so then I started thinking like, what other things am I doing or thinking where I'm not actually doing these things that Jesus like said, where I'm saying that I love people, but am I really loving them? And so, when I think about how we put people in prisons and how we treat them, I don't think that that's right, and I don't want to do it, and I don't want to be a part of it, and I don't like policing, because, um, that type of public safety, the way that it's set up, is to me, it's evil and harmful. I don't think there's anything wrong with having people who are like, yes, let's investigate this murder, blah, blah, blah. I don't think there's anything wrong with a bodyguard, somebody that's like, um, hey, you can't harm these people, that's not okay. But I do have a problem with people walking on the street looking for somebody who's just not following rules. Because some of the rules are ridiculous. They're random. Somebody decided this is a rule, and we have to follow it, and it doesn't harm anybody. It's just, they don't want you to do it, and sometimes it's just something that might harm yourself, might, like, like, uh, jaywalking.
Jaywalking, I was gonna mention that.
Okay, you might get hurt, you might not. Honestly, you could get hurt even crossing the street the right way. That doesn't make it less likely that you're gonna get hit.
And it's not consistent, um, you know, like, they, they may see it sometimes, and then not do it. And it's not consistent, um, you know, like, they, they may see it sometimes and then not do anything about it, but they might see somebody else do it and be like, oh, I'm gonna give them a ticket. I feel like giving tickets today.
Cause they have discretion, they have discretion. And the problem is, when you have a country that was founded upon racism, right? Then their discretion is going to tilt. They can't help it. That's the way our country is. Like even me as a black woman, I've had to learn how to love myself, because everything I've been taught from the media to religion, the way religion is, at least in the United States, is black is bad. And so I've had to intentionally teach myself, no, you're good, you're lovable. What you are is okay, is nothing wrong with you. But it's a message that I have to give myself over and over again, because when I look at books, when I look at the things I was taught in school, all those things says black is bad, you know, so if I think that and I'm black, how can a white person not? Think that, even if they don't acknowledge it, how can they not? Cause you have to intentionally not be racist. So when we say the term anti-racist, that's what that means. It doesn't mean not being racist, right? Cause that's not really doing anything if you're just not racist, because we have too many systems in place that are racist. To be anti-racist means, you go looking for the racism and you destroy it.
I like that. I like that. I've never heard that, and I like that. Um, so kinda going back, cause I want people to get to know who you are, um, at least my listeners. I'm, I'm sure a lot of people know who you are. Prob- probably more people know who you are than they know who I am, so it's kind of a dumb thing for me to. Where are you from? Are you from the local Lansing area? Were you born and raised here?
I'm from Chicago, Illinois. Uh, my parents uh, moved to the suburbs when I was little. Uh, I stayed going to church in the city. My family was super religious, like my mother's the minister of music, father's a deacon and.
What kind of, what kind of church was it?
So, um, when I was little, we went to like a, a Pentecostal church, it was more kind of like Kojig, I don't know if you know Church of God and Christ, super religious. Women only wear skirts, don't wear makeup, blah, blah, blah.
I grew up in a Baptist church, so.
Okay, well, so that's where I started off, and then my parents went to a, a non-denominational church that used to be a Baptist church, but they decided they didn't wanna follow all those Baptist things. They wanted to be more open-minded, open-minded. Um, and so then I went to that church, and that church, they were really into educating you about the Bible. I mean, it was like, we studied all the time. And so I went to church like three to five times a week, like my entire life, right? Until I became an adult and decided how I wanted to go to church. Um, but, so that has shaped a lot of my views about like everything. I had a very sheltered life, um, even though I lived in Chicago. Because my people would be like, those people are bad, we're good, don't be like those people.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing with churches, is they're, they're like that, they're like, don't go to that church down the street because they're, they're sinners. They're sinners, they're preaching God's word, but they're sinners, don't go there.
They'll say, mm, they, they're not doing it right. And I'm like, how do you guys even decide this?
How do you know? Have you been?
I got into this huge, this is gonna be off the rails a little bit, but I got into this huge discussion with my mother, because there was this one year where I was just like, I wanna learn about all the Christians. So I went to all the different churches. And my mother got mad, cause I went to the Kingdom Hall. They're not Christians. And I'm like, literally, they are. I went there, they do the exact same thing you guys do. And she was like, no, they don't. I'm like, yes, they do. They literally pray in Jesus' name. They literally do the same thing. And then she, so then she started, you know, debating like, well, what, what are their theology? And I started telling, she's like, well, that's not what I know about them. And I'm like, you ever think that maybe they're not a monolith? Maybe Jehovah's Witnesses are different.
Right. Wasn't Jehovah's Witness created by a man? Or by a boy, by like a teenage boy?
Oh, I don't know, Joseph Smith? Wait, is he that one, or is he the Mormon guy?
I don't know anymore.
They're all white men, and I know that they came up with these things in the United States. That's, those are, so those are American sects of uh, Christianity.
How does your Christianity play into politics for you? Because you said you don't really have much of a, a polit- like a political background. Um, you're obviously still learning, I'm sure, and you will be for years to come. Um, how do, how does that play into your, your ideologies, what you would like to see happen locally?
So I'll say this, so um, I always thought, like, ever since college anyway. When I went to college, initially I went in and I was like, I'm gonna be a doctor, because they make money. And then I went to Michigan State, which is, that's how I ended up coming to Michigan.
Go green.
Go white. I go to Michigan State, and then I see all these people fighting against like all the isms. And it like, I was like, oh, oh my gosh, what if I did things because they were good to do? That was like, God might like that. I want God to be proud of me. I think I'm gonna look into doing it. And so I studied political science, and in studying political science, I learned about different systems. I had always thought, the United States does it the best, and then I learned, actually, we don't. And there's people who bypassed us by far. And there's other ways we could be doing things. So then I was like, man, I would really like to do that. But then I also wanted to be a mother, and you know, have a lot of kids. And so, you know, I had that idea of like, kinda centering on, you know, being a good Christian woman, you know, blah, blah, blah. So I did that. And then after a while, when I saw what was happening in politics, I was kinda like, ew, gross. I don't even think I wanna be involved with that at all, and so I became an activist instead, where I'm like, okay, I'm helping women who want to have their children where they wanna have their children. I'm helping women, you know, breastfeed, helping women, you know, whatever it is, you know, get sick pay, equal pay, whatever, things like that. And plus, that was something I could do and still bring my kids with me. I have five children. From the ages of six to sixteen.
I wanna know how old you are. You don't look that old.
I'm thirty-nine.
You're thirty-nine? Wow, you look good.
Black don't crack. So, um, so yeah, so when, you know, as, as I'm having children and all these things, and I'm living in Lansing, and my views about Christianity are changing, I'm starting to think like, I don't know if I think we should have like a theocracy. I think everybody should be able to be comfortable. And the more I think about that, I'm like, I think Jesus would be okay with that. I like that. And so for me, so Jesus was a person who, who cared about the most marginalized people. And ate with them, and you know, communed with them, like was with them. And so to me, this idea that, um, that the law needs to represent my views, to me is like, no, the law needs to protect everybody's views, as long as their views aren't actively harming somebody. Um, so like, to me, when people are against the LGBTQ community, that's act of harm. Um, you can think whatever you wanna think about how you wanna behave. That don't have none to do with somebody else, that ain't your business. So for me, being a Christian, well, for one, I don't, I don't believe that Jesus has a problem with people being gay, but that's, that's by evolving from being in Lansing. But the other thing is, even if there was something that Jesus had a problem with, um, I don't think that we should run the government based upon somebody, one person's religious beliefs. That's silly. There's all these people who live here. You have to serve all of them. So, but my lens is through love. So for me, that's my belief, that's the thing. So to me, I'm responsible.
I was just seeing what your shirt said. I was, I seen a heart, so I was wondering if you were wearing a shirt that represented that.
It, it does. It's one of those Lutheran things. Um, that, I think it's the ELCA is open and affirming to LGBTQ people, which is why that's a church that I am okay with.
Okay, that's in Slanting?
Yes, yeah, well, that's the denomination. The, I don't know what it stands for. I haven't been in a Lutheran church a long time, it's been like four years. But because I studied all the different Christian, I'd be like, getting them mixed up, and I'd be like, okay, they all like Jesus, okay?
I'm sorry, real quick, do you find that it's easy to, I lost the point that I wanted, but it's easy to, never mind, just never mind. I was gonna ask a question about that, and it just kinda slipped away.
Oh, I'm sure you'll remember it again.
I hope so.
Um, but I was just, I was just saying that, so because I wanna make sure that everything I do is from loving people, then I wanna make sure that everybody is taken care of, taken care of, especially the most marginalized. Cause other people have other resources that they can, you know, grasp from, and some people don't. And to me, that's really important. And also, I think even if you just think uh, on a secular, on a world viewpoint, that you're a civil servant, servant. Like, you're supposed to take care of the people, that's your job. You know what I mean? So to me, like, it just fits easily with my Christian beliefs. Cause it's like, hey, this is a good way to affect people positively on a larger scale than just in your church. And you don't have to, so in church, the thing that's scary is, people expect people who are not Christians to come into their church to get food and clothes, and they gotta hear you and your weird religious beliefs. No, that's what I like about the government doing it, cause you don't have to like ascribe to a belief. Or pretend, or you can go in there cussing, you could do what you want, dress how you wanna dress, and you still could get your, your free food and your clothes, you know what I'm saying?
I remember what I was gonna ask now. So you going around to all these different churches and like willfully wanting to learn about all these different religions that are kinda essentially all the same, um, do you think that by doing that, it made you more accepting, will- willingly, willfully accepting of others? Easier, like it was easier to be accepting of so many different demographics of people and?
Yeah, it made me realize that we keep trying to make it like, they're so different, and it's not, it's not different. They all really want to serve God, they all really want, they do, they all seriously think they got it right. So one thing I like about my church, I don't even know if I should shout out my church, I'm gonna shout out my church, whatever. Um, so I go to University Lutheran Church. Um, and one thing I like about them is that they're always doing things with the mosque next door. Because we believe they're our brothers, and that's like, duh. How we gonna be the Abrahamic religions? And we're like, you're not as Abrahamic as I am. I don't get it. The more, the more I looked into Christianity, the more I'm like, I don't think it's as rigid as I was brought up to believe. And so I'm okay with that, and it also made me okay with people not being Christians at all. Cause I'm like, God knows what's good. I don't need to know what's good. I just need to do whatever God put me to do, and not worry about myself.
That's, that's hilarious. That is so funny. Yeah, religion, it's so funny, just the, the different, like, like we had mentioned, the different churches, like they're an evil church, they're a good church, don't go there. Oh, it's Baptist, you're going to a Baptist church? Go to a Baptist church. You're going to a Lutheran church? Stick with Lutheran. It's, it's crazy. Um, so kinda going back on a serious note now, um, the gun violence in Lansing. It's becoming an issue, a big issue.
It is.
Um, there's people are, there's shootings almost every day. What is your opinions, and what do you think could be changed in your administration, and what would you like see?
I think it's just interesting, people are just now like paying attention to it, it's been happening, it's been going up. And the people been complaining about it, and the people ignored them. And to be honest, they didn't even, until it went into their precious Rotary Park. They're precious, you know, you can't touch this. Then it's like, oh no, we have to do something about this. But you still don't really see them doing anything to address it, cause they don't care, cause they don't have none to do with them in their mind. Um, so for me, coming from Chicago, um, to me, Lansing is a haven. It's one of the reasons why I stay here. It is nowhere close to as violent.
Were you from the south side?
Yep. Um, and yeah, in the Roslyn Pullman era, and it was, and in the nineties, it was, oh my gosh. Y'all, I mean, seriously, y'all have no idea how horrible it could be. So it's not like that here. And so the thing that I see is, um, like it could be great here, and the way the violence is right now is actually more interpersonal, it's not random. So that means that we can address it. These are conflict, um, issues, like people don't know how to resolve their conflict, and they're young. And, um, they're angry, and let's be honest, people are struggling, people are stressed out, people are hungry, people need love, like it's a lot of things that are not being met, a lot of needs that are not being met. Um, so for me, that's part of the reason why I'm like, let's defund the police, because we need to take that money back to the people. Because what's gonna end up happening is, um, it's going to get worse. The more you try to ignore the group of people who need things, there is going to get worse. What I see in.
Well, we could put a special task force on it. Wouldn't that be a great idea?
For one, um, this task force, the task force that I've seen them using is made of, um, more privileged people. Um, it doesn't matter, just because you're black doesn't mean you can't have privilege. Everybody has some type of privilege, and it's like they literally picked the privileged of the most privileged people. Um, that's not a task force. A task force would be, where are the hood elders? Okay, where's the OGs?
Where's the people from the community that can talk to the, to the young people in the community?
And, and, and.
We need more of like a mentorship.
It, we definitely need a mentorship, and that's why I want them to go ahead with advanced peace, that's one way of doing it. It's not the only way. But you can't sit there and argue about this way, that way. Let's just do it. Let's do it, let's take care of the people, and it doesn't require more policing. So the thing, what you do is when you have more policing in marginalized communities where they already have bad relationships with the police, is you just create more volatile situations. That's not what's gonna help. What's gonna help is addressing people's needs. Um, people need mental health, okay? That's the number one.
Number one.
Number one, number one, okay? They also need to know, um, they need conflict resolution skills. So they need to, um, they need to be trained in that, like they need to be able to learn how to, okay, when I get angry at this person, what can I do? Find out what are your triggers, like what makes you go off, blah, blah, blah. Why am I going off? These are like deep things that people need addressed. And, and they need places to live. The housing is getting ridiculous. When you make people think that they all have to fight for resources, then they're going to get violent. That's anywhere, that's not just in Lansing, that's not just in the United States, that's all over the whole world. Wherever you have urban areas, and people feel like they have to fight for resources. So what I see with the gentrification that's happening here in Lansing, is they're pouring all their resources back into the middle class. The middle class don't need them resources. Why are you pouring it into skating rinks and new parks and uh, new convention centers and blah, 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 this? When you haven't even made sure people got clothing and food and shelter. What? Don't nobody think that's weird? I think it's weird, cause most middle-class people, if they wanna go somewhere, they can be like, I spend my money and go to Detroit. They can spend their money and go wherever. We can build that type of stuff here, but there needs to be balance. If you're gonna build stuff that's for leisure, you still need to make sure you're taking care of the people. And you should be putting way more money into taking care of the people than you're putting into leisure. That's, I mean, it's ridiculous that they're like, well, we got millions of dollars in grants to do this. Well, you found a grant for that. Why didn't you find a grant for, um, stopping the violence? Why didn't you find a grant for the housing? Why aren't you making sure that all the low-income housing is actually going to low-income people? We shouldn't be having any homeless people unless they wanna be homeless. And if they wanna be homeless, we should be protecting them. Make sure that there's areas that they can be safe.
Yeah, that, and that's another issue I wanted to talk to you about, was the homeless issue, cause it seems like, as I'm driving more, like around Lansing more and more, that there's, seems to be homeless people. Like, I, I'm sure you've seen underneath uh, the highway, the expressway in Pennsylvania, in Pennsylvania, there's like, it looks like an apartment that was dumped up there. And I'm like, what is going on? Like, how is that allowed? Why are, why is somebody, why is there not somebody, some government official driving past us and be like, we need to do something about this?
So they're doing something is usually putting them in temporary housing, and they're not making sure that they can actually afford housing, and so they end up back in the same situation. Um, because a- as you know, in our country, the amount people make is not enough to actually pay. I mean, I myself have, um, gone through foreclosure, yep, and gone through foreclosure like four times. Um, but it didn't, I mean, we, we, I don't, prayer, grants, whatever, you know what I'm saying? I've lived in the same house for sixteen years, it's been a blessing. Um, but it has been a struggle the whole time. But let's say for some reason that I didn't get those grants or whatever, and then I could've just been out on the street with all my kids. My husband could, and these are the things that people don't know, that a lot of homeless people have jobs. They have jobs. It's not that they're not working, they don't make enough money. Um, yeah, uh.
So are there programs locally that can help homeless people?
Yeah, 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 but the problem is, the, the city government, from what I've heard, what I've been told, is that they're blocking a lot of things with their little contracts. They want it to go to this person, this person doesn't have the best, you know, thing in mind for the people, they just like getting that money, like especially for the temporary housing. Um, so they like to put people in that temporary housing, somebody's getting paid for that. And um, uh, so they don't care that the people are funneling in and out of the temporary housing. Um, yeah, it's really sad.
It's just a bed that they have to fill, and they're probably getting paid for it.
Yep, and there are people who actually care about our people who don't have houses. Um, they're not being listened to. I've spoken to them.
Who are they?
I'm not gonna say, because I don't think that they want, apparently they already get fired.
After the podcast, so I can possibly reach out to them?
Um, but yeah, there's people who definitely wanna do stuff, and, and they do a lot already. They do a lot of good work. There are a lot of great people in Lansing. Um, our government to me just doesn't reflect the culture I actually see in Lansing.
Right. Yeah, I agree. Um, that's one thing, by doing this podcast and kinda joining like the Fledge, and we went. And we went to an event yesterday at the Fledge. Yeah, and, um, is that Lansing is a tight knit community. It's really cool to see how like intertwined everybody is. Like I interview one person and then I gets talking about another person. They're like, oh yeah, I know that person. Like, that's, this is so cool. This is really cool. So it, Lansing is a really good community as far as, you know, the like how intertwined everybody is and how passionate they are about our local, local community.
They are. And if they were given the opportunity to actually have the resources of the city, we wouldn't be having the problems we're having. We got all this money that, they keep trying to act like we don't have money. We do have money. We are the capital of Michigan. Stop pretending we don't have money. We do have money. You just have certain things that you're used to using your money for. You know, and maybe you need to reprioritize. The other thing they've been doing, so you saw how they tried to take the retirees, like health benefits? What in the world is wrong with them?
I didn't see that.
Oh my gosh, they tried to cut their benefits like almost without warning, like. And, and so a lot of them who started to find out, then they came up and they started protesting. Protesting against the mayor cuz he did it without city council's permission. How's that possible?
Who, whose benefits was he trying to take?
The police fire, all those city, you know, the city workers. Um, and it's, so they were saying, well, we have, these are unfunded, right? They're saying they don't have enough funding. What would happen is mayors upon mayors, every mayor keeps taking from the pot. So you can't blame it on any one person at this point, right? But that don't make it okay. It just doesn't. Do you know what I'm saying? And so to me, they should be trying harder to make sure that that's not gonna happen.
Trying harder to put more money back into that pot.
Yes, yes. And so that's something that I'm concerned with. Um, I don't know how that would work because it's happened all around the country that they've done that. I don't know how it's legal. Like I, I would, how come that's not like this pot is untouchable? Like I'm so confused about how that pot wasn't untouchable. Um, and I found out recently that they can actually change. So let's say that you were a police officer and you retired and you, let's say you retired early cuz they said, oh, well, we need you to retire early because you know, it costs too much to pay you, blah, blah, blah. And let's say you paid in, you, you, cuz you can pay in your little money so you can retire early. That they can change your benefits later, years later, ten years later. There's not benefits that you agreed to. And the whole reason you retired is cuz you thought I had all this set up.
Right, I was set. I'm good.
Right? Now, this is the thing, I don't like the popo, but you know what? They did their job. So when they retired, they need to get everything that came to them. I believe that wholeheartedly.
Well, it's not even just them. It's, you know, city workers, like, like people who work.
We don't have those people anymore, but they used to be.
We don't have people that clean streets?
No, I mean, we got the people that do the trucks, but there used to be actual, so you know how sometimes people are like, let's do a cleanup, blah, blah, blah. There used to be actual city people who did that. But now it's like people volunteering. Everybody's like, this is what, why don't we all do this? And it's like, that should be the paid for by the city. I don't understand why we think.
Also kinda going back to like giving the power back to the people, don't you think it should be something that maybe we agree to do as a community?
So my issue with agreeing to do it as a community, usually what I see when people talk about these things is a bunch of shame. So they try to shame people who are working two and three jobs. Oh, you need to also be doing this. Okay, who has time to do that? Middle class people. Okay, middle class people, y'all gonna do that. If that's what y'all wanna do, you gonna do that. Me, I'm gonna sleep and watch a TV, okay? And I'm joking cuz I do sometimes help do stuff, but I don't feel that everybody should be doing it. Everybody don't have the same capacity.
Yeah, I mean, if you're working two jobs and you have a family, shouldn't, you shouldn't have to take time from your family to have to go clean up the city because some other people decided that they were gonna throw junk everywhere.
Um, but, but I do agree.
In the same token, if I'm walking past trash, I'll pick it up and throw it away.
But in an urban area, it's not just picking up trash. It's a dumpster full.
Yeah, there's a bed and what am I gonna do with this?
And so, and, and it's lovely that people in Lansing do that. But what I'm saying is there actually were people who were paid to do that.
I was, I was just playing devil's advocate. So during COVID, a lot of people lost jobs, a lot of businesses closed, like local businesses. What would you like to see happen as far as local, I, in my eyes, a lot of businesses have actually opened too since COVID. A lot of people decided that during this time, you know, I'm tired of working this bull crap job. I'm unhappy. I'm just gonna put my time and effort into something I actually wanna do. What would you like to see happen as far as businesses locally? And what is your opinions about the businesses that had to close down?
Um, so one, I am very sorry about the businesses that had to close down. Most of them were small businesses. I think we should be, um, investing in our small businesses. I don't like that we keep giving these big companies tax breaks when we need the tax money, obviously. But then you got the local mom and pop shop and they struggling. So like, you know, when they decide they wanna do all this revitalizing downtown, okay, well, why don't we revitalize like? The local businesses.
Things that make it downtown.
Especially if it's in, in the south side. Like they act like the south side don't exist. There are people with businesses there. Nobody's doing any sprucing up, you know, on the south side. That would be awesome if somebody's like, let's develop the south side, you know? And to me, I would like to see development that.
Do you think that, this is, and this is again, kind of devil's advocate, but if you start developing, like let's say the south side, do you think that would push out the people that are there now? Because?
Of course, if you're not giving the money to them to develop. I'm not talking about giving it just to some developers. So one of the things, the ideas, one of the ideas I've had is that if somebody wants to come in, a big company and develop, that they should be required to give some money to like a pot for the small businesses. Because a lot of these bigger companies can push out the smaller companies. And I also think that if we do have those big businesses come in, they need to be paying a living wage. They can't come in here. If they paying below that, then they don't get a tax break. If, I, I think we should, I think we should stick hard on that. I don't think there's a reason not to. They wanna come over here so bad, they want a tax break, then they should do things that are gonna be good for the people. So yes, you definitely, what's happening right now is the people are getting pushed out. They're, they're pushing, they're trying to ghettoize Lansing. They're making areas better that already were decent. And the areas that are bad, they're not doing anything to. And it's just making it worse. I actually lived in an area that was redlined and I had no neighborhood association, nothing like that, nobody to speak for us. Um, because a lot of the people who lived in my area were renters. I owned my house, but a lot of people rented. And now because the housing market is so crazy, there are people who bought those houses who normally would never.
Bought houses there.
They would never have lived over there. Never, never, never. And it's so weird. And it's like, you're, like I'm watching my neighborhood transform around me. I'm looking at the market, at what my house is worth, and I'm like shocked. Cuz I'm just like, and then I'm nervous too because that means I also can't afford to get another house. So I have seven people in a three bedroom Cape Cod. We don't fit in there. But I can't afford to buy a bigger house because we're getting outpriced. Like, you know, there's people who have big money. They obviously are not from Lansing. And I know cuz I've gone and knocked on people's doors. And I'm like, oh, blah, 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 where you from? And they like, oh, I'm from blah, blah, blah. And I'm like, why did you come to Lansing? It's so random. We're not even talking about college students. We're talking about people who just were like, looked at a map and was like, I'ma get a house here.
And that's real strange. And that's one thing I was actually talking to Mayor, uh, Shore about was that, I was like, you know, that, it seems that there's a lot of, um, what did I say to him? Seems that there, Lansing's growing like tremendously. Uh, there's development going on everywhere. And I think I was asking him like what the percentage of people coming here is from other locations. And he was, he was saying that's pretty significant. And I'm like, why? What's here? What's in Lansing, Michigan?
I do know they're opening, because they're giving these tax breaks to these bigger companies, those companies are coming out here with their people.
Like the, all these weed businesses?
Not, no. I'm talking about like Wayfair. I'm talking about like.
Wayfair's here?
It's about to be here. Oh, yeah. It's about to be here. It's about to be a few places like that that's coming here.
Because the only thing I could really think of was, um, there's a, there's a, like a weed place that's based out, I think out of Boston. And I was talking to a lady at a restaurant who works there and then they, I found out later on that they bought the old summit. And, and so it's gonna be huge.
I'm sure that can be happening too. I didn't know that there were a lot of weed places that weren't local. I'm still learning about the weed business. I've been talking to the cannabis brothers and sisters trying to find out what's their deal. Cuz I'm just kinda like, oh, you know, I thought everything was cool with weed here. And I'm finding out it's not. That there's been a lot of, you know, well, with the city council and them kind of restricting so many things. And there's another thing coming up about, um, I, I guess about, uh, about the growers and stuff. Like it's all this different stuff going on. And I'm like, okay, I need to talk to these people cuz I don't, so I don't use weed, so I don't know anything about that stuff. But I support people wholeheartedly. I think it's a, a good business. I think it's a good health benefit. Um, unless you're smoking it, guys. Smoking is always bad. Um, I'm saying this as a firefighter and even bonfires are actually not good for you. But, um.
No smoke is good for you.
It isn't, but it smells so delicious. I love a bonfire smell.
Do you like smoke anything like on a grill?
Oh, yeah, barbecue.
Cuz that stuff's not good for you either.
I heard. But, but I think it's in large quantities, like everybody does every, you know, does something. It's not that great for them, but in large quantities. You know, it's not good for you. That's why you'll see firefighters with like, you know, cancer and stuff like that. But I do, I, I do know that, that there are other companies coming and they are bringing people.
Can you say?
I already said one. I'm just saying that there, so there are people from the east coast and the west coast is coming here. That's why they're able to pay so much for the housing here. Cuz that's nothing to them. So to us, we're like, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm not paying a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a three bedroom. And they're like, that's it? I'm used to paying five hundred thousand dollars. I'll pay for that. So, yeah, our city's being, so I just think they need to, we need to keep some affordable housing. They need to be, and I think we need to have some like, you know, oh, you've lived in Lansing this many years, blah, 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 your taxes aren't gonna go up, blah, blah, blah. You know what I'm saying? There just needs to be some type of protection. Cuz we don't wanna end up like what happened in New York, like in Brooklyn and what is it, um, Bed-Stuy, where these were predominantly black areas and they have black businesses and da, da, da. And then like, you know, some hipster white people come over there and they're like, this is cool. I love it. And then next thing you know, the black people are all gone. The black businesses are gone. And now you got Starbucks and Panera. And the bad thing is that these are chains. It's not that they're different businesses, it's that they're chains. So local people aren't benefiting from it.
So the businesses coming here are chains as well? The good thing about that though is that they do hire people in our community.
If they're paying good enough, it's good. If they're not, it's not. There's plenty of jobs now. I'm sure you've heard. We can get any job we wanna get. I've, I've been thinking about it. I'm like, should I try to get a different job? I don't know.
Well, now would be the time.
I know, right? But then I like finally got a job that I kinda like, um, they don't pay a lot, but I'm like, you know, I don't know. I don't wanna tempt fate. You know, life is stressful. Sometimes it's, it's better to have a low stress job and little pay. Than to have a high stress job and a lot of pay.
Right, exactly, exactly. Let's see here, I'm gonna try to think of other questions I had for you real quick. We're, I work coming up over, over an hour. Well, I have two questions here. I reached out onto the five one seven page to ask cuz I, I said I'm interviewing you today. And so I wanted people to send me questions and only two people did. But, um, one of the questions is from Adam Grant. And he is, uh, a former, um, he was formerly incarcerated. He was in prison, I think for thirty-four, thirty-seven years for an R, or he, he tried robbing a bank. So he's now out and he's working with, um, that is a very long time. He was actually on the podcast. But he works with Nation Out, Nation Outside, I believe is what it's called. Um, but his question was, what are some of the jobs that you would like to see returning citizens doing in your administration?
I would like to see them doing whatever they wanna do. Um, unless it's like, you know, like directly like, oh, I was like a white collar person who took money, you know, and so maybe you shouldn't be working in treasury, you know? Not yet anyway, you know, maybe we gotta do some, some proofs or something like that. But I don't know, I just don't believe in throwing people away. So honestly, I'm like, I don't, like, I don't understand why there's this rule that like you can't hire felons and I just don't understand the purpose of that.
Do you know who, uh, Henry Myers is, or Meyer? He, uh, owns the East Side Fish Fry. Um, and he hires nothing but felons. He was actually on the podcast too, and unfortunately that one didn't record. Same thing, same, actually, I think it was the same day as I interviewed Andy Shore.
I hope mine is getting recorded.
It is, it is. Everything's been fixed since then, so you're good.
Yeah, any jobs that they would like to have, I, I would want for them to have. I don't, they serve their time.
I have a problem with, uh, people who have done something wrong and then we, we just label them, like, okay, they're, you know, they shouldn't be a part of society. They went to prison. They don't, they don't belong. They don't, they don't deserve. I, I don't like that.
I don't like it at all either. I don't think that, like, I think you can do, I think it's okay for you to be able to do background checks, right? But does everything need a background check? Like?
Like, what, what would you say you don't need a background check for? I would say housing.
Definitely you don't need it for housing. Um, I mean, I guess, I don't know, I'm, I think I'm a little bit like, I don't know why everybody needs to know your business. I just don't understand that.
But I guess, again, I could see it for housing.
Yeah, okay, so I guess when it comes to sexual predators, people will want to know, right? But you can just look that up. Why does that need to be a reason not to get housing? What, like, what's the thought process behind that, eliminating somebody's housing?
Or how about during the application process, we just put it on the application, have you been convicted of a crime of this sort? If you say yes, then you can't house here because there's people that have kids that live here. But.
Maybe, I just, I don't like it. I don't know. I just, I don't like this idea that we feel like, um, Because everybody can do that. Everybody could say you can't live here cuz there are children here. So then where are they supposed to live?
That's true.
And then, then they, I don't know. I just, I don't like that type of stuff. I don't understand. Like it's, it's like we're saying we're protecting people, but we're really not. Cuz it's not like we actually do all the things we could do to protect people. Cuz there's things we could do, right? Like we can make sure that we're actually paying attention to that registry. Do they? No, they don't. But they block people from getting housing. That's not the same as actually protecting people.
Well, I mean, and the thing is, is like, when somebody buys a house, like let's say my neighbor, I have a new neighbor, let's say I have a new neighbor and he's a sex offender, that doesn't stop them from selling him that house and I have kids. You know, it's not like they're gonna be like, no, he has kids, you can't, you can't live there.
Right. No, not if he buys a house only for renting.
Only for renting, so why is it that way?
Cuz they're evil. I don't know. I just, I, I'm the wrong person to ask about those types of things cuz I'm just like, let people try to be good before you just assume they ain't gonna be. And help them to do it. Help them. Make sure they got the resource. Hey, what do you need? Do you need this? Do you need that, blah, blah, blah? Are they in therapy? Can we give more scholarships to people going to school to be therapists? Matter of fact, all therapists should go to school for free. That's my belief. Cuz we need it that bad.
I agree. And a lot of therapists need therapists.
You can't be a therapist and I have a therapist. That's not wise.
No, I would say not. That's, that's a question I wanted to ask you. So obviously you work two jobs. You're running for city council. That's probably a high stress thing as well cuz you're dealing with the community, you're dealing with social issues, you're dealing with a bunch of different things. You're dealing with people who aren't necessarily looking for your best interest. I'm assuming it's stressful as well as your, your personal life, your family, your kids, everything. Just everything going on. I know my life gets stressful. How would you manage stress? Do you, do you work out? Do you, how, how do you manage? Do you meditate?
So one, I think I don't realize how stressful things are. Until somebody's like, oh my gosh, how are you doing that? So I don't be thinking about it. I just do things, you know? But I will say when I do feel stressed out, I'm, one, therapy, definitely prayer and church, singing, dancing, hanging out with my friends. I'm an extrovert, so the more I'm around people. So that's the one good thing about this whole city council thing that's so weird to me. Like being around people makes me feel good. So it kinda makes it not as stressful. The parts that are stressful is like the, the paperwork, like the, let's figure out how to raise money so we can send out. That part's stressful. But like talking to people about what they wanna do for the city, that's not stressful to me. I would probably give up one of my jobs because I would be able to afford to because the city council gets paid more than I do. So that tells you how poor I am. So I could give up one of my jobs.
And what's crazy about this, you have to fund it all, your, your campaign, right? Or do you have like sponsors?
I mean, I go begging. I do, I call people all the time, like.
What kind of sponsors do you have? Do you have, like, businesses that sponsor you? What kind, what kind of sponsor, you just have, like, friends donating, or?
People in Lansing.
Just people in Lansing.
People I didn't even know, and they're like, I believe in you, and I'm like, shoot, for real? That's awesome. Um, so I did get, um, an endorsement that was supposed to come with money, it hasn't come yet. So I have raised fourteen thousand dollars just off people saying they believe in me. And no big business, like, literally, just, I believe in you. I was shocked, I was shocked, I don't know.
That's truly amazing. How do you feel, your, how, how do you, obviously, you said in the beginning of the podcast that you feel like you're going to win. Um, how do you feel about your party winning, like, you, you, and then also, uh, you're also running with Oprah, and then?
Oh, Kathy Dunbar, I support them, I definitely support them.
What do you think the chances of them winning the election is?
So, I wanna be positive about it and say, yeah, they're gonna win, but realistically, this is a hard fight. It's not like it's a hard, not like a hard fight for us. Where, they have more money than us, because they got the fire union, the police union, the pu- plumbers and pipe fitters. They got those people giving them money. I've got people giving me seven dollars and seventy-seven cents, but do you know how much that touches my heart? Like, somebody gave me seven dollars and seventy-seven cents, I wrote them a love letter, okay? Cuz I'm like, that was, I remember when I gave to Bernie Sanders. When I gave twenty dollars, that was twenty dollars that was supposed to be for lunch. But I'm like, I believe in you, Bernie. So, the idea that somebody gives me that small amount is bigger than somebody who gave me fifteen hundred dollars. It's like huge, cuz it took a lot for them to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep, um, so no, I don't have any big, um, I mean, I've got some people who endorse me, but they ain't give me no money like that. Uh, Green Party gave me two hundred dollars. Mostly it's been, it's seriously been individual people, my brother and like this lady I used to go to church with, were my biggest donors. My brother, I called him, I was like, hey, so the limit is like twenty-one hundred, so, how much can you give me that's close to twenty-one hundred? And he like, I don't got twenty-one hundred dollars. I said, that's okay, whatever you can give me, I'm a dick, and he gave me like eight hundred dollars. My brother is the bomb, he is, he's my baby brother, I love him to death.
Cool, that is cool. And is he, does he live here in Lansing?
No, my family lives in, in Illinois.
Okay, and what do they think about you running for city council?
My parents are hilarious, I told you they're conservative, right, and Republican, and they were like, well, I don't believe in your politics, but I like that you care about people.
That's what's most important.
And they're like, well, I don't think I raised you that way, but at least you're talking about Jesus. Weird, and they gave me some money.
That's cool. That is really cool. That's kind of interesting that, uh, people that don't live in our community are donating money to.
Well, it's my family.
Right, right.
You know, call your cousin, I got my cousins give me twenty-five dollars each.
That's cool, that's really cool, and it, it all, all adds up.
It does, it added up to fourteen thousand dollars, and so people can talk about me all they want to, like, oh, she doesn't have this, and she should've started this, that, and blah, blah, blah. You know what? People love me, they believe in me because they know that I love them and I believe in them, and that's how Lansing is, and politics needs to get with it.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, one more question, um, and this is from an anonymous person. But he's big, I wanna say he's big in the arts community here locally. So, his question is, how important do you feel the arts are to the future of Lansing? And do you view the arts sector as an industry here locally?
I never really thought of it as an industry, um, it seemed like, well, it's probably trying to become one, cuz you know, they trying to capitalize off everything, but Lansing is, you know, like Lansing is like very like artsy, you know? It's, and everybody's into art, and when my, my kids first started school here, they had art teachers. Like, literally, they had art class every day. So, and then they stripped the art and the music and the gems. And so their teachers try really hard to replace that, and then we've had community members step in and be like, well, I'm gonna teach this, and I'm gonna teach that. But then COVID happened, and they didn't want to let none of us into school, so that sucks really bad, but, um, I think the arts are important, um, they're part of Lansing. I just, uh, since I've been in Lansing, like, actually, I've never really been into art like that, except a very specific type of art. Like, I really like comics and, um, black art, really like comics, I collect comic books. I collect comic books and.
Like Marvel, Marvel-type stuff?
DC, but I mean, I probably got a Marvel or some, my husband's into Marvel, I like DC, I'm like Wonder Woman. I like a lot of independent comic writers and stuff like that, but, um, they, I, they made me like kinda interested. That was the first time I actually tried to paint something for real, like, was here in Lansing and making a bowl, I made a bowl here. Like, I never would've thought to do that when I was in Illinois, like, um, no, that's definitely a part of Lansing. I never thought of it as an industry, though. I do see that they're trying to make it that way, and I think that that's good for artists to get money, but I just don't wanna see it, uh, become corporate.
Right, right, and the individual that asked, I don't wanna give too much information about him, cuz he wanted to be anonymous, but I feel that he doesn't want it to be corporate either. That's one thing I, I would have to say about Lansing is that, especially by doing this podcast, I've realized that a lot of people, um, are, are artists. And there's a, a, a lot of different types of art, and a lot of people find, like, a goo- it, it's a way for people to express who they are and, and themselves and their emotions and everything. And I think it's kinda cool that adds that hip vibe to, to Lansing, like, if you go through, um, I mean, they have, like, different, like, statues, not statues, uh, like sculptures and, uh,
And the murals.
All stuff through, through town, I think it's, it's really cool.
Yeah, it is, everybody, it's like everybody's an artist, um, I am not good at drawing.
Me neither.
But my kids, they went to school here, they taught them so little, they are very good. Like, when I see my kids' art, it's, but it's because they taught them at a very young age, it's part of Lansing.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely part of Lansing. Alright, cool, um, yeah, I don't, I can't think of any other questions. Is there anything else you wanna talk about, anything you wanna promote on the podcast?
I, I definitely need people, go to clarettoforlancet.org, I need people knocking on doors and passing out these signs, I got a long list of people who want signs, or, otherwise, I'll just be doing it myself, um, going all around the city.
You had somebody working for you, cuz somebody came to my door, like, uh, the week before I was actually supposed to interview you. And I'm like, I'm actually interviewing her in like a couple days, and they're like, what, really?
Yes, I, I have volunteers, but, um, they're volunteers, and so, you know.
Right, yeah, it can be flaky.
You know, um, but they all love me, their heart is there, you know? But yeah, I need more, so I think people just get burnt out, and so, you know, if other people are willing to take their place and pass out these yard signs, that would be awesome. Um, on the money tip, y'all can always give me money, but actually, I'm gonna ask you guys to give money to Kathy Dunbar and Oprah Ravish, um, cuz I think I got enough to do one more mailers, so I, I think, I mean, I'm, there's probably some other political things you're supposed to do with the money, I don't know about that, um, but I know that they need, um, money to do all their stuff. Like Kathy definitely needs to reach out a larger group of people, and Oprah needs to, in order to defeat the other guy, like, she needs more money. And because she works so much, so she doesn't have as flexible a job as I have, and so it's been harder for her to be able to get all these things done. Um, so, yeah, give Oprah Ravish some money, give Kathy Dunbar some money.
How can they do that?
Oh, Lord, you gonna ask me their website? Go Google it, go Google, I know Oprah's is like, Oprah Ravish for War Two or something like that, and then I think Kathy Dunbar is just like Kathy Dunbar for mayor or something.
So you just Google them and it'll come up?
And give them some money, okay?
Alright, well, thank you for doing this, this was a pleasure, and I hope that in a, when, when is the actual election?
November second. But people are voting now, cuz absentee ballots went out this week. Which is super exciting.
Probably won't know any, any results, right?
No, they don't count, absentee ballots are counted last. So, like, the day of the election, the primaries, I was losing my mind because I was in second place with, on the day of votes. But I didn't have enough money to send out mailers with the absentee ballots, cuz I, and I don't know political stuff, I didn't know, that was such a huge deal either. But I came into the race late, and, um, by the time they counted absentee, I was in fourth place. So this time I was like, oh, I gotta get those absentee, cuz over six thousand people voted absentee. And only fifteen thousand people voted.
That's crazy. In a population of what? That's insane. Well, hopefully, a hundred and eighteen thousand people vote this coming election.
Well, I think the voters would be eighty, like eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, because that's just Lansing, right? Like, like, just the, it's not Ingham kinda, it's a.
Well, eighty-five thousand is registered voters. Something like that, rounding. So it would be nice if eighty-five thousand came out to vote, but they gotta get excited about it, and they haven't felt excited, they feel like, yeah, blah, 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 these people trying to screw us. So I'm hoping that, I'm trying to tell to more people about me, cuz I'm like, I'm definitely not gonna screw nobody, not intentionally. If I do hold me accountable, I will apologize and do better.
And I think that's what's important, I think that's what our local politics need, that we need somebody who's from our community, somebody who's not from a privileged situ- situation, obviously, you're, you're hustling every single day to make a living for you and your family. You know, you work hard, um, and you're running for an off, an office position, and you're obviously going to work hard when you get into office too.
Yep, always work hard.
For the people.
Oh, wait, before we finish, I'm supposed to say like these things, I, see, I don't talk like this, but you're supposed to, so I'm supposed to say, I've been a resident of Lansing for sixteen years, I am a firefighter EMT, I was in the Army Reserves as a combat medic and a mental health specialist. I went to Michigan State University and got my degree in political science and elementary education. Hmm, I have five children from the ages of six to sixteen, and I've been married for nineteen years.
Why are you supposed to say that?
I don't know, they always wanna know that stuff, and then people be all like, and I'm on this board, I'm not even gonna go into the board stuff, cuz that's annoying to me. I don't know why I have to say I was on this and I did that, yes, I did that stuff, Google it.
So what, what are you gonna do now, you know, like? That's awesome. Well, thank you for being here, it was an honor to talk to you, and I hope that in a few weeks, we can have you back on, and hopefully you won. Alright, thank you, go vote.